Okay, good evening everybody. Good evening members and good evening members of the public who are here this evening. And to those who are watching online or later on watching on YouTube if they've got nothing else to do. Right, we'll move straight on with the action. What I would ask is, any of the mobile, if you've got a mobile phone, can you please turn it off? Or turn it to silent so that we're not interrupted by music or whatever it may be on your mobile phone. So item one apologies, I've got apologies from councillor Heatherington and councillor Hudson. And I think apart from that, we've got a full lot. Are there any declarations of interest on the items on the agenda this evening? That's a no. Right, item three, public participation, this for the members of public is, there has to be something in writing prior to the meeting and we haven't had any. So let's take care of item three. Item four, minutes of the council meeting, that's to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council, held on the 22nd, 27th of June 2024. Can I have a proposal please? That's a nixie, second councillor Huxley.
Chair, can I just say, I gave my apologies for that meeting. I've been left out again.
Yeah, well, better teach you to go on holiday.
I think we should have said James not here.
We did.
Yeah, we had, yeah, thank you for that and we will mark that, make that. So has anyone got any comments to make about the minutes at all? No, so it's been nominated and seconded, so all in favour of the minutes please show. Thank you, that's carried, any against? No, thank you. Right, it's now my intention to change the rest of the order on the agenda and that is to bring item seven allotments forward to now. And then later on, obviously, we'll do item five about the finances after. So I'm now going to pass you over to the town clerk.
Thank you Chair. So the Finance Committee in, had a meeting in May, received a report which you've got before you. And a resolution was made to give notice to the legacy tenants who live outside of Ramsgate, effective from the 30th of September 2025. This rule is also to apply to tenants who have moved out of Ramsgate during their contract. This decision has caused considerable upset for the affected residents and members have asked for an opportunity to reconsider this decision. So first of all, reconsidering a decision that's been made within six months is a procedure to go through. And you're asked whether you, if you can suspend the standing order that, to allow this matter to be reconsidered within six months, Chair.
So members, I've proposed that we suspend standing orders, the second councillor Austin. All, all members agree?
Agree.
Thank you.
Attached to your report are various appeals from the plot holders asking the council to reconsider this decision. These have all been anonymised, so that I don't believe this matter should need to be considered in confidential. There isn't a need to discuss individual plot holders. Please note that a petition from one allotment site is included. However, three of the plot holders have called the office from this site to say that they did not support this petition but felt pressurised to sign it. From the Ramsgate residents waiting list, you also asked to hear from people on our waiting list and the top 40 people on the waiting list were asked a series of questions and you have their responses in front of you. And then also within my report, there's various questions and answers about matters that have been raised.
Chair, can I ask you a question? It's only because I don't have a report in front of me, but so you've got 40 people on the round to get waiting list. I was wondering, do we have the time, sorry, because I haven't got it in front of me. Do we have the time that they've been waiting, the length of time?
Some of them up to three years.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question please? Of the 40, how many have signed it?
Let's see, we've got 12 responses. Yeah.
Yes.
Can I just say, it says top 40. Does that mean there's more than 40?
No.
Yes, there's over 300 people on the waiting list, but we didn't write to everybody.
That's what I wanted to just clarify, thank you.
So members are asked to consider if and how the resolution by the Finance and General Purposes Committee should be changed.
Right, members, I'm going to propose from the chair that we rescind the decision of the last committee. And my proposal is that the residents who, or residents of, let's put it that way, who have, were transferred over from TDC to RTC and live and do not live in the area anymore. So that they should retain their status within their allotments. But, there is a but to it. Those residents with, those plot holders, rather, I should say, who have more than one plot must give up those plots and just to retain the one. We think that's fair, so you still keep your plot, but you do, but you do not have more than one, that then allows us to put some more of the residents of Ramsgate into the allotments. And you will keep that status until such time as you wish to give it up. Or through passing of time, you're no longer able to deal with your plot or go upwards.
Nice plot.
So that's my proposal to the council. Do I have a second for that please? Councillor Moore. Members, want to discuss?
Can I just ask, are you allowed to pass a plot on to somebody else in that sense? So it's once you've given up your plot.
Yes.
Instantly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That's Austin.
There was a proposal at one point that if we allowed people to keep on as the legacy tenants to stay on, that we should ask them for a small additional contribution to help balance up the fact that they're not paying the Ramsgate precept, is that, is that still under consideration or not?
Personally, no, I haven't, that's not the proposal that I'm making. I know it could, it probably makes sense, but I just think, it's up to you, if you want to make a proposal to, and we can add it as an amendment. Councillor Ross, councillor, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was.
I'm sorry, sorry, beg your pardon.
It's a mixture, there are still some whole plots, but in some circumstances, we've gone down into quarters. It's quite a mixture across the estate, there's holes, halves and quarters.
That's great.
This business of only one plot, is that a rule that we apply to our Ramsgate residents?
Yes.
Yes.
That's fair then.
Yeah.
How many plots that would free up?
I think it's only, I think it's only two.
But those two plots, four plots could then, actually.
Eight quarter plots.
Yeah, exactly, so I mean, at most eight people could then, okay.
That's a win.
So presently, we have no Ramsgate people living in Ramsgate with four plots.
Yeah, there must be.
Yeah, I think there might be, I'm not too sure, I think, because we still have quite.
I mean, we do have an equality issue here and I don't think, you know, we're all, we're all in, we were all come up to this situation because we took ownership of the allotments from TDC. So we're stuck and the allotment owners are stuck who don't, who don't, who don't live in Ramsgate. So I support them keeping their plots because I think it would just be morally wrong to take their plots off them. But I also think whatever we apply to those residents, we need to apply to our own residents. If we're going to be fair and equitable. I also think that the plot owners concerned need to be asked their opinion, maybe not at this meeting, but then maybe that, if there's still objections, it needs to come back to a further meeting. I also think, this has raised for me personally, a lot of issues because what do we do with a Ramsgate resident? And it, it, it triggers, it's the whole eviction thing that's going on at the moment. So what do we do with a Ramsgate resident who's evicted from their property? And they are placed out of area, but now into Margate, heaven forbid, into Ashford. Are we going to apply the same rules to those people, which again, I would think is extremely unfair? And what, and I also think we need to review our list as well. So I personally believe those people without access to gardens at home should be given priority to access to our.
I think that's, that's a different issue. I want to shift to the issue that we're dealing with here.
But this issue has raised other issues and what we need to make sure we're operating in a fair and equitable way.
You can hand to FNGP with that, you can put a report, ask for a report. Come to that and the town clerk will do it. What I want to say to you is, the difference between our own residents and these, and these plot holders is that they had a letter on the transfer, right, which said about them maintaining their plots. There's nothing, there's nothing solid in legal terms in relation to that, so those, you could consider those letters to either not be legal or as your words were, it would be wrong to not let them, to not let them keep it.
And you weren't aware of that.
And we weren't aware of that when we made that decision back at FNG. No, sorry, beg your pardon. Councillor Shum. Pardon? Well, we can, we can arrange a meeting between anybody and they want, they want to come in. It won't be, it won't be a full council meeting, but we're more than, I'm more than happy to attend a meeting with you. Well, that's, that's your opinion, so.
No, they're all.
No, I'm just saying, that's. But that's your opinion on that, and so until, until we get the full thing, then I'll need to do that. Councillor Shum.
This goes back a long way, as far as I'm concerned, that Peter Campbell was an honourable councillor. Those are the arrangements he'd done, unfortunately, the tie between TDC and Manseot Town Council. I agree with what you said earlier. It is a problem, but I still feel that we should honour TDC and the connection we had. But don't forget, go to the much bigger picture. We had a town clerk that took TDC to court to claim our lot at Manchester. It cost Ramsgate and us £100,000.
Can you just stick to, can you just stick to what we're doing with councillor Shum?
Because if you use allotments, you should replace allotments with allotments, we wouldn't be sitting here. As far as the lotments today, Peter Campbell, I was here then, that was arrangement. He was an honourable councillor and we should stick to that.
Thank you, councillor Green.
I think that ties always a bit with what councillor Shum was saying. I hear what you made us the recommendation just now, but I wonder if actually we ought to just do a complete strength reversal of the FNGP decision and then. I'm hearing all sorts of queries from other members and I'm just wondering if we should do a complete strength reversal. It's only going to make a difference if two plots.
First, I mean, what you've got, what you've got at the moment? I put forward a proposal, it's been seconded and you can vote on it. You will vote on it, either you support it or you don't. And if you don't support it, then come up with some, with something else. This has been hanging around for a little while now and I'm just trying to put this to bed. Right, that suits, that would suit everybody.
Can I propose amendment to that then?
What?
That this motion comes forward and it will be pending an independent meeting with allotment holders.
No, I've already agreed, I've already agreed to that, the town clerk's made a note of that. The town, the town clerk will be happy to contact, if you give us the contact details, we're happy to contact them, we're happy to have that meeting.
What I'm saying Chair is that that meeting might bring forth further information that would be useful for a further formal meeting. So I'd just like an amendment to that motion that would, that would just take into account a meeting with the allotment holders.
I don't accept that, sorry. That's right, I agree.
Could I ask the few people that would be giving up a second or third allotment, how long would they have?
Well, we'd like them to give that up immediately.
Is that part of the proposal?
That'd be part of the proposal, yeah, part of the idea to give it up immediately, yeah. That's Shum.
Just a quick question, and they've asked here, actually been to all the lotments and seen the lotment plots. I've been up there many years ago and someone are meant it, but they're not used. So I think somewhere, one, someone should have a look at what is used and what isn't being used.
If I can, if I can just, if I can just.
That might help.
If I can reply to that, our officer who deals with allotments, contacts, contacts plot holders on a regular basis and if they're not carrying out the work that needs, that needs to be done, then we serve a notice on them to get off. And then that comes to me for decision. And quite often, I think, actually 99 out of 100, I've supported the officer. So that's that, councillor.
Our difficulty is the 300 Ramsgate taxpayers that want an allotment and we can't provide. We haven't yet been able to buy any more land to turn, to turn into allotments.
Well, there is some at the back at the cemetery, there's land there and I'm quite happy to talk to TDC about getting that.
Right, well, that's.
Quite happy about that and then we can expand the allotment.
And that would be a good thing.
Yeah.
So we've got to try to be fair to both.
Of course.
Groups of people. And I tend to think your proposal is probably best that we could do it.
I think if we look at it another way, right, it was only until recently we knew about this. So all those years it's been going on, no one's ever cared about it, the Ramsgate residents haven't cared about it. So, you know, I think, I think that'd be quite, that's a nixie first.
I think, and again, they probably haven't cared about it because I didn't realise that those plots were taken by non-Ramsgate people. Don't get me wrong, I, I don't think we've taken anybody's plot off them, but just to the people in the room, just so that you're aware, as a town council, you know, and I was told this when I first started, we have one statutory duty, one, and that is to provide allotments for residents. So you can see the dilemma that we're in with regards to that, it's what we have to consider first and foremost, is the people on the waiting list and the fact that they're Ramsgate residents, which is why we're finding this so difficult. Because nobody wants to take allotment off anybody, but we do have a waiting list of 300 people and that is our duty. So, so it is something that we are considering properly, not just, it's not a whim we're doing this or anything.
That's great, then.
I was just going to say, I would be voting against your motion on the basis that I am hoping that we can
That's part of the proposal.
Yes, I know, it's part of your proposal, but there was a little bit about at the end of it, but I can't remember the exact wording of.
But you want to, so you want to do something about wording that you can't remember?
Yes, it was something about the second plot, if someone has a second plot.
Yeah, which, did that go? They give that up?
No, and I'm saying that we undo, we just undo whatever the decision was and we start again with a clean slate, with all of the informations and the opportunity for everyone to have.
We are doing that, we know, we've got all the information.
Well, it wasn't that clear from your motion then, so you need to tell me your motion again.
Sorry, just what I've gone out to get, which councillor Green raises, is how many whole, half or quarter plots there are. So across the five sites, there are about 60 whole plots, 335 half plots and 34 quarter plots. So there's still.
Large.
A lot of large plots are owned by the, at least to the residents of Ramsgate. And I am aware of one tenant who has got two because they took on a kind of obscure area.
That's a win.
People that aren't Ramsgate residents, have they all got old plots?
No, it's split. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but no, it's a mixture. I don't think they've got any quarters, but I think it's a mixture of whole and half plots.
I just want to bring the deputy town clerk in.
When I was away back then, when you took over, I believe the majority, there was a huge amount of whole plots. And so there were Ramsgate residents who had whole plots and non-residents who had whole plots. And as they were given up, they would then split.
Yeah.
And the quarter plots was a brand new scene that was bought in, I don't know.
Absolutely.
I will abstain on the motion because I don't like councillor, I don't like the second part. And I particularly don't like with immediate effect because.
We're, we're in the middle of a growing season, which means produce is going to be just trashed basically, which doesn't sit well with the climate emergency that perhaps.
When we were in contact with a legal advisor at the National Association of National Allotment Society to ask about people moving out of the area, they said we can give them one month's notice. But we explained about the legacy tenants and they said if we wanted, we could give 12 months' notice as long as it was after the 29th of September, because you can't notice during the growing season.
Can I, can I just ask a question about that? So this is, this is the worst case scenario. It's what we can do to get rid of somebody, so it's a bit like, I'm not saying we're a dodgy landlord. But it's a bit like a dodgy landlord seeking legal advice and somebody saying, well, you can issue an S2021 and get rid of them straight away. So does the National Allotments Association think we can actually do nothing as well? It's okay for them to just have the plot?
That's, that's up to us.
I'm asking for the, I've been given one opinion of the National Allotments Association, a clerk another. I'm asking for clarification on that.
It is within the Allotment Acts that the council can set rules for who can have allotments. So can, rather than must.
Councillor Green, then.
I'd like to express an amendment. That's the people that were asking to give up their extra allotments, we give them 12 months' notice.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
12 months' notice, yeah.
All right, I'm happy with that.
It's long term.
Can I ask the second? No, I need to ask the second if she agrees. Do you agree with that amendment?
Oh, sorry Chair, I proposed an amendment to the motion and you just haven't heard it and now we've just accepted.
I, I, yeah, but I would, I proposed a motion and I didn't accept yours. Councillor Moore, do you accept, do you accept the amendment? Pardon? Yes, you did, you, you put your hand up to second the motion that I made. So do you agree with the, do you agree with the amendment?
She seconded it, couldn't she?
Yeah.
No, no, she, she seconded the proposal, second, didn't second your proposal.
So it hasn't got a.
Do I need a second, I need the second to accept it? Okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, but accepted, so, sorry, councillor Green, that has to be done that way.
So you've accepted the amendment?
Yes, that's what I said, I accepted it, as long as she accepted, I accepted. No, because I didn't think it was relevant, that's, that's why, but that's, but that's. I know, I've just told you, but it was my, it was my motion. I decide my motion, it's my, my motion. Same if it was yours, you could say I don't accept it.
I'd be prepared to listen, actually.
Well, you do. Right. Councillor.
Could the town clerk read out the motion with the amendment please? Because I've got a bit lost and I can't hear down here, they're.
Lost the plot.
It's very noisy.
To allow the legacy tenants to remain, to retain their status as allotment holders, but anyone with a double plot must give up one until such time as you want to give it up. With the amendment, if they volunteer to give it up, they will be, their second plot, they will be given 12 months' notice.
And there's only one part, there's only one other bit that was missing out of that and that is that we strike out the previous decision. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, that's not what I thought it was, do you read it again, town clerk?
No, I said that at the very start, my motion firstly was to rescind the FNG.
Got that.
Meeting, and that was, and that was the rest.
Would you mind if the town clerk reads that, Chair?
Allow the legacy tenants, from the beginning, because I can't, the rescind bit, I want the whole thing from the beginning.
So everything he said, because it's not in, we haven't got it in writing, says how the resolution should be changed, but then councillor Ogden gave us his res.
Not the resolution should be changed, the resolution, that, 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 that isn't. It's rescinded from FNGP.
Chair, it said, our recommendation for this meeting says, members are asked to consider if and how the resolution by the Finance and General Purposes should be changed. We do not have your proposed motion in writing in front of us.
We're the court together, but that's why I'm making a proposal this evening.
Which is why I need to.
Because otherwise it would have been one of you making it.
I think that's what, yeah, that's what councillor Austin was saying.
But I'm losing the plot here, is there anything else?
Chair, I believe you started with to allow the legacy tenants to retain.
Yeah, but then you rescind the FNGP.
So, you did, sorry, Chair, you did start with to rescind, the very first word you said was to rescind the original.
I don't think the wording that was read out was what you actually said.
To rescind the decision of the FNGP committee meeting and allow legacy tenants to retain their status as allotment holders, but anyone with a double plot must give up one until such.
So we're just about to do an amendment to.
Until such time as they want to give up, but then with the amendment, that if they volunteer to give up, to give 12 months' notice.
There's nothing about volunteering.
No, not volunteering, no, not volunteering. Okay, so we've got an amendment, we need to vote on the amendment first, okay? And the amendment is, is to give the current plot holders who are not Ramsgate residents the 12-month period of time from, you said, end of September?
Yeah.
The end of September, because of the growing seasons councillor Wing said.
Which actually is the notice that they've currently got.
Yeah, so and that's to give up, and that's to give up an extra plot, yeah.
Chair, you said immediately.
Yeah, no.
Yes, that's the amendments.
The amendment.
You're supposed to check the amendments.
No, nothing about the end of September.
No, 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 well, if you want it from now, if you want it from now, 12 months from now, is that what you're saying in your amendment?
Yes.
Okay, that's the amendment and it's up to people, it's up for you now to vote on that amendment. And let's be clear, put your hand down for a second, let's be clear, that that amendment is for. And let's be clear, put your hand down for a second, let's be clear that that amendment is for the current plot holders to give up any extra plots. So if they got two plots, they give up, they give up one from twelve months from today's date. Okay, are you, are you clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
September, it's today's day.
All those in favour, please, none?
Can we just have that word legacy kept in there? Or?
Yeah.
Can we have that word legacy kept in there?
Ah, yes, so it says allow legacy tenants.
There you go. Right, all those in favour, please show for that amendment. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, those against? None, so that's carried.
Abstentions.
Abstentions. Three, four abstentions, okay, thank you. Now moving on to the, to the full motion with the amendment. Are you all clear on what that is? Are we all clear on that? Right, so all those in favour of the amended motion, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, those against? Two against? And abstentions, please, councillor Green. Thank you. That's the end of that item. Thank you very much. Hope you're more than welcome to stay if you wish to sit here and go through the rest of the agenda. It won't all be like that, I, I hope. All right?
Could I just start shouting? Will we be notified if this is.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, your information that may be handed available.
Yeah.
Can we?
Action it.
Pass the motion to action.
Yeah.
That we give you, that we ask you.
What I can do is, what I can do is, I can put the item nine and a half in. Do that, or can we do it on the end of this?
That legwork, just getting on with that legwork, we've been presented with all opportunity. The council has previously resolved that if I see opportunity.
Yeah.
We should, we should follow it.
Do that and then I'll, I'll raise that, the management team will.
Can we ask you, the TDC was who's given us such really helpful advice? I don't know, someone that councillor Green was in contact with. Whether they are.
None of us with me.
Well, their information is really, really helpful and it's great to hear.
Okay, members, can we come back to the meeting, please? Right, item five, finances including grants, item one of five to receive report of payment from the first to the thirtieth of June twenty twenty four. The council was asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and RFO, a total of twenty three thousand one hundred and nineteen and two pence and approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO, total of sixty three thousand nineteen thousand and thirty five p. Members, any comments? Right, so we need to note and approve. So can I have a proposal, please, to note approval, councillor Nixie? Second to councillor Green. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried. Right, item six.
Item two.
Oh, I beg your pardon, thank you, five two, to receive a report on payments first of the thirty first of July twenty twenty four. The council is asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and RFO, a total of eight thousand three hundred and fifteen pound twenty six and approve the payment above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO, which is a total of seventy thousand one eight nine and twelve p. Again, any comments, members?
Those have been noted.
No comments. Right, proposal, please, councillor Nixie, second one, please, councillor Austin. All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much, that's carried. Now we go on to item seven, yes.
Not sure if we've noted the decision to put part of our money into an interest bearing account. I think we should note that.
Yeah, okay. Do members hear, hear that? Okay, can you, can you turn around, councillor Green, and just tell them what you just said?
The previous council decision to put a big chunk of our money into an interest bearing account has been actioned.
Absolutely right.
Well, item six is policy procedures and annual review. Members are asked to review and adopt the new model code of conduct as recommended by the Kent Secretaries Group. Four related procedural documents are also attached for information. Previous Kent Code of Conduct was approved in May twenty twenty four. As per standing order seven A, you are asked by the proper officer to reconsider and adopt this document open brackets, within six months of the previous resolution. Councillor Green?
Don't think we have any choice.
I don't think we do. Second to councillor Cretton. Members, any comments? It's really important, the code of conduct is really, really important, so you know, what we need to prepare ourselves with. So all those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you very much. Item eight, committee meetings, to note the following committee meetings. Draft planning infrastructure committee minutes, tenth of July twenty twenty four. Anybody got any comments on those minutes, that's what Cretton did.
I wanted to make a comment that's not specifically about these minutes, it's just that what I realised ever recently is that when our planning committee discusses planning applications, and in this case eight items were discussed. All eight items have been uploaded to every single one of all of those eight items on the TDC website. I did raise that with planning applications manager at TDC and deputy town clerk and deputy town clerk was looking at how that. Because I feel that's inappropriate. So when you look at the time square.
Why is it inappropriate, I ask?
It's inappropriate, in this case forty nine Bell Square, you can read all the comments on Calf Avenue, Baywood, Rowan's Avenue. They're all there on the same.
But it's all in the public domain?
It is all in the public domain, I just don't believe that it's appropriate for all eight, eight discussions to appear on all eight pages.
That's the chair.
I just wanted to ask.
That's the chair of TDC planning.
Well, that's why, that's.
Have you asked the planning manager whether that's a point?
That's why I started it.
What did he say?
And. They have no way of differentiating them and so the only way they can do it is to file this form of the time document. So I just.
Chair, they're all, they're all in the video of the meeting, isn't it?
I know that, it's.
So it's in the public domain?
I'm not querying that and I know that that is, I just queried why information about other applications was added to every single application we discussed. And, and I was just asking how to resolve this from our end or not.
Councillor Green?
Thank you.
The same thing happens with the Ramsgate, the Ramsgate Heritage Group that I sit on now. And I, I, I said to them they needed to load them up individually and I think that's the issue, that TDC at the other end can't separate them out. But I agree with you that I don't think it's appropriate for other applications information to be on an application. It should, that, all the, all the comments should relate to that one single application and nothing else. But it's the TDC end, I think, is the issue when it comes to a group.
It's good, but I'm a, I'm a TDC planning agenda. I've never seen like a comment from Ramsgate Town Council on about other applications on it.
Oh, that's on, they're in the report.
Yeah, but it's not in the report that comes to members.
No, but it goes on the planning portal, so if, if, if. So for example, when my planning application went in, Ramsgate Design Heritage Hall made comments on my property, which is okay, we're allowed to do that. But when you look on them, and I'm using mine as an example so that I'm not offending anybody else. If I go and look at my stuff, I log on to theirs and I've got all these comments that relate to some other planning application, I don't think it's appropriate. And it's the TDC end.
I was going to say, therefore it's a TDC issue.
TDC issue.
So don't we as Ramsgate Town Council, whoever's concerned, need to write into TDC about it?
If you're a town clerk, if you're a town clerk, it's about saying we can't do anything else, then, I don't know, I don't know what you want to do with it.
Load them up separately.
Where you want to go with it.
I may just say, I just wanted to ask the town clerk if there has been any say on the deputy town clerk, so that's it, but thank you. Is that fine?
Members, on the planning, we have proposal minutes, councillor Nixie, second one, please. We have a second proposal minutes, councillor Austin. All those in favour, it's seventeen minutes. Thank you, that's carried. Right, really important matter now, item nine, long term plan for towns. This is to receive a report from the town clerk and the RFO and consider proposals contained therein for submission to the long term plan for town board. Before we go into any discussions, can I just make it clear, just make it clear to members that Ramsgate Town Council has no formal right to submit anything because we're not part of that, we're not part of that. However, however, it's part, a part that we do have a Ramsgate Town Council who will be on the board who can then put stuff forward, in my, in my opinion, in relation to that. So discussion with the town clerk, town clerk's come up with a list of things that we think, that we think you might, might want to add more that should, we would hope that councillor Green can put forward in a, in a surreptitious way and, and a subliminal way to the board. Okay, so I'll just make that clear. Town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. At the moment, I believe that TDC still hasn't heard from Deelup following the election.
Can I just give you an update? The update, the update on that is, is that there will be no action taken further on the, on the town plan until October. Make of that what you will, because that is when the government will do.
Change its budget.
Its budget. So they're not, the board won't, the board won't be picked until October or after, or after the budget, so, but we, we obviously need to prepare in case, if it goes forward, it still goes forward. They may do nothing with it. So, but yeah, that's what I was told yesterday, the leader advised me of that.
So the, the projects in here are not necessarily, necessarily everything you can think of, but these are projects that Ramsgate Town Council has considered, supported, already, already discussed. And the, the board that will be picking the project is going to be people from the community. There's going to be very few elected representatives on that, that group. But this was intended as a, as a way of saying, giving that board something, so they're, they're not getting ideas piecemeal from us. And the project will, they will have seed money to work things up, so there's not other ready proposals here other than Radford House. But my thinking was that we definitely won't get anything if we don't indicate or try.
Councillor Green?
Yes, I finally managed to get to read this before the meeting because I couldn't read it online. And it's, I like everything that is here. There were a couple of things I just wanted to comment on, on the enhancement page. And that it refers to rewilding and I really wouldn't want to see rewilding along that seafront. I think the former horticulture and biodiversity officers' suggestions and information, councillor Kenin President's comments about ideal planting along that stretch that he did a few years ago.
Without any consent from anybody?
Without any consent, but it was, it was way too expensive, but nonetheless, the horticulture information in there about appropriate planting, I think was, was still very, very valuable.
I agree.
Rather than rewilding.
Formal, more formal.
Because we hardly, it's good, but it's not always good in some places. Restation fountain fountain, I think town clerk and I worked out earlier that it's actually no fountain in fountains because there's this fountain on the, it's most of the future research. I wanted to ask you questions, one question really. Do we have, bearing in mind this page, an update on the progress regarding the eastern bandstand and this big lift in our conversations with the council?
Yes.
Can we have a call to the council on that?
I can give you an update on the, on the bandstand.
Yeah.
And that is that I've recently written to the head of estates and formally raised it, that this has been going on far too and, and that we wish this to be resolved ASAP with a licence. So it's possible, it's not, it's not rocket science, it's a, it's a bloody licence for us to take up. And I think their first offer was for a licence for a year, but that is not good enough.
Yeah.
You know, you need, you need at least five years to be able to do something with it and to get something going. And I can also advise members that I've had, the town clerk and I had a meeting with the person who's doing the. Yeah, Let's Save Ramsgate and he's Cliff Bandstand. And, and so we met with her, which was a, a good meeting. They got the, they got hold of payback who we did the whole area around the bandstand. And we've also, they've also asked the payback and as far as I'm aware, they've now got consent from TDC to paint the railings daily. But they'd obviously got to be done to it as part of listed structure. So, and, and that's hoping will start, we take place this week, so I'm advised. I think it's got, it's got to a point now with all of these, all of these issues where for so long that I'll be talking to the, to the chief executive to say it's just, it's not good enough. You know, to try and give officers as much leeway as possible. And I know they've got a hell of a lot on their plate, but they've got a damn sight more officers now than they ever had. So I'm anxious to be able to actually do it. And I'm sure that's not basically a.
And the lift.
Formal. The lift is still no go at the moment.
We had, because councillor Green and I turned to the side because it was with the lift engineers and various others back in the lot. And they were trying to get some investigation into whether or not a particular piece of light substance was asked us to access the shaft.
And the answer to that is no, nothing has happened.
So in the way that it seems.
This week, Andrea has said that she'd like a meeting with me and I've said to her, I'm available anytime. So hopefully that'll be. Uh, so hopefully that'll be.
Get out of that one.
Let's meet in the lift shaft.
It's white stuff in it, though, it's probably.
Um, it's, it's.
I, I, I just thought you need to.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll just answer it.
Right, did you, did you go into any more? Councillor Green.
Uh, well, I think I should say something about where we are on the board.
Yeah.
Board has met once. Um, and we know that once, once we get the approval, if we get the approval in October, you'll tell me.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes sense. We know that the first thing we've got to do is point extra people to the board from the broader Ramsgate community. And then the second thing, there's, there's been no agreement who they should be. I put forward to Ramsgate Society and the town team, but other people had, had other ideas. Um, the second thing we're gonna have to do is issue a call for projects. And we're not, not to decide on the projects within that closed board. We feel that we need to go to the community and ask them, which includes our TDC, for what projects.
Ah, good news then.
They would like to bring forward that if we approve this this night, that will be what comes forward from us.
Yes, good. And I, I, can I just, um, I'm just looking here about the highway improvement plan. And, um, I just wanted to thank you really, councillor Wynn, councillor Makison, councillor Shonk, for the work that they've done.
Yeah, still do it.
Um, and, um, yeah, accept the praise, beg your, accept it.
Well, it's something that I don't want people run over, so that'll be the praise, when nobody gets run over. I, I, I think we should share, because I, I looked at the crash maps and, and it's, I, I went down each individual road and, and counted all the incidents on a particular road. So I've put it on an Excel spreadsheet so that we can manipulate. And I also put after each road, major junctions. I've got some adapting to do with that, but it will be handy to share with people. Because if I've missed a road in your fault.
Oh, that'd be excellent.
Uh, then you just need to tell them and I'll go back to the crash data and have a look. So what we're doing now is trying to look.
Not gone, you're, it's not true. It's definitely got said, didn't it?
Laura can share it to camp.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I think obviously at some point, and you've got to bring that down to kind of the, maybe the three most important.
I think with sort of their district safety is, is still.
You know. District and crossing, yes, school offices should be.
But I get it, it's hard.
Yeah, should be.
So however you choose the schools.
Uh, exactly, well, in the most dangerous areas, yeah.
And it, and I know this is, a, a sort of fatalities are really bad. But if you look at some of them, they're sort of one off. So Lombard Street was a, was a, a driver under the influence.
Yeah.
So, you know, it was terribly tragic, but if you take them out, then you see the near misses on roads, the serious collisions, and there's, the worst road is Ramsgate, Margate, Ramsgate. No, here, here's.
Isn't that becomes Ramsgate Road, that is top.
And then the next one is.
Dumped and parked on that line. And South Eastern has, is, is strangely doesn't have as many, but we've got issues all over the town, the whole town. I don't want to go out on my bike anymore.
South Eastern's got too many parts where it's, you can't get in the road. But also, what we're looking at now is where is our position in Kent? Because we have the worst crash data. I want to try and find out who, which area's got the least number of, is the safest place and then go and have a look to see why.
Somebody's will.
For example, there were two accidents last week. Nobody was hurt, to my knowledge. So I immediately, um, emailed Lizanne. I said, can we at least have, they're called SIDS, speed indicator device, if you know those electronic things. A long-winded reply, which basically says that Ramsgate, or some Ramsgate's got to apply for them and we would have to pay for them. And that's a rare, that's a swear.
Now they're roads.
Well, I've noticed your banners, obviously, I've been told your banners. Yeah.
I think once we've got, once we've completed the hit.
Then we've got an evidence tool.
Yeah.
They can't dispute because we're using their data.
Yeah, but I know the.
Can I bring up lighting again? I know I brought it up before and I don't know if anybody here ever goes off on the road, on the pathways.
Yes.
Yeah.
It undulates, the light is up in the tree.
On the road.
I know replies from case C saying they don't cut tops of trees. I'm sure the fire service have got the longest letters. And if they could take the tops off the trees, then the light would follow them for the foot. And you're going along there, it's quite dangerous.
Well, maybe that's something you could, you could add into your highway improvement plan. Best, best, better lighting to, especially in areas that are, that are the.
London Road is bad.
It's two hundred and fifty three trees on London Road.
You can't, you know.
Yes.
You need to get something better to do, Barbara.
I can use matches and there's, there's lots of trees that are in the garden.
Oh, no limit.
Thank you for that, thank you for raising that. Um, councillor Green, this was it, oh, councillor Shonk.
Can we come back to the bandstand?
Yes.
I'm not saying why you're talking about highways is that. We're making roads on that one day. Anyway, the bandstand, TDC had a hundred and fifty thousand pounds spent on lottery funding. And it looked like that and it was used like that. And we let it all fall into disrepair. Uh, it's not like the one in Wolfstair. You have many bands up there and it rains, it's a very windy spot off in that, in the east. It's lost the rails in the cement, it used to have the windows in there. So if it was windy, you would just, well, wow. Years ago, the, it was a beautiful building. I don't know, that it used to have a bronze corset on the bottom concrete there. Full stone and fine metal thing.
That's a safe corset.
Wait, say what you want. It all depends what you wear.
Yeah.
But that's what it was.
Yeah.
That's the only problem, spending money on that. And all those lights up there.
Hmm.
All split.
It's a shame, isn't it?
All the lights up there are split because the, the metal was in the concrete, it was.
Yeah.
But it's a lovely building. I just wonder what happened to the hundred and fifty thousand pounds properly funding. It was up, up in money.
Well, I guess that's what, I guess that's what they spent it on. I, I, I wouldn't have a clue, I don't suppose anybody here would either.
Well, the money was raised by this group, which is kind of. It was spent on restoring the bandstand itself, which has fallen apart because the metal rust within the columns were rusting, ambers, and it's putting the tires. That was all done. The lighting, um, was an addition. And the railings were in just about the same state as they are now in that they were rusting and through rusting was splitting the, uh, the concrete that they were fixed to. And that's all, that's what the money was spent on. Nothing else. There wasn't enough money, unfortunately, to do anything about the laws surrounding bandstand. I wish, dearly wish, that, that, that we could have gone on to.
It's gonna be, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost a lot.
But we'd asked them to tell the council.
It'd be a couple of hundred grand.
And it didn't, and nothing has, has been done since.
That's great.
I think, uh, I mean councillor Green, we could be happy with this, but it's the community group. I'm not sure if that's a correct title, but they were, that group folded. And certainly when councillor Huxley and myself and I were elected to East Cliff five years ago. Since then, councillor Huxley and I in particular, for the first three years, were very clearly on to TDC about essential repairs. And, um, then it came to this council that we agreed here that we would seek to take over. In that time, nothing's been done.
Era, which was East Cliff residence heritage. You're right, it did fall.
Yeah.
Okay, but before I did that.
But also, there was a four year period where you kept control of it. I didn't know.
Um.
Long.
Sorry, councillor Austin.
I wanted to say thank you to the town clerk, because I think this is a great piece of work and really, and, and impressive.
Do.
Um, it's got all the stuff in that I would like to see. I'd like to thank, um, councillor Wynn and the highways group because that this is the great stuff that they've got here. And I'd like to point out that councillor Preston didn't need any permissions to produce a plan that he did in his own time as a volunteer. Um, and it, it had no status, it was just his thoughts. Um, it actually came out of a guided walk that he ran quite some years ago, which went from the Albion House right through to Broadstairs, looking at potential things that might be able to be improved in the landscape. And it came from that.
Might not be, might not be fair, when he spoke to us, councillor Huxley and myself, we were under the impression that the work that he presented to us had been done to the business. I think that's not, it was, it was.
It was, I haven't recalled that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but that was, that's why I said that.
Sorry, can we, can we just get back to what, to the whole doc?
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Yeah. These are great pieces of background. And they describe three, three projects between probably. But they're not, they're not bid for funding. There's a lot of work that needs doing.
Yeah, yeah.
On all these documents. But I don't know yet, assuming we, we get the ground, is, is whether there'll be help within the funding to turn these.
To, to turn it into. Well, you need a project manager, don't you?
Yeah.
Gonna need that. I, I think, can we, um, personally to, to accept, accept this.
Yep.
As work in progress.
Yeah.
And I think for all members can always come in with an idea that the town clerk say, oh, what do you think about this? And we can add it in and then we can come back to members, so we've got until October.
Yeah.
Um, I think we need to wait till after that, whatever, whatever date the bloody bugger is.
Thirty fourth October.
Thirty fourth October, is it? Okay, so maybe we, then we need to put a meeting aside for November and then to come back and see what happens. Yeah, so our members.
I was just gonna say, we need to be working up on this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to be working these up.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak.
Yeah, yeah. Work, work in progress, you carry on with the work that you're doing and then, and then that can all, that, that can all go in the mix. Okay, members, can I have a, uh, just a proposal to accept councillor Nixie, uh, and a second up please, councillor Austin, all in favour please show. Thank you, members. Uh, that's good work on both sides. Um, right, item ten, date of the next meeting is Wednesday the twenty eighth of August. Seven PM, that's the end of the meeting, thank you ever so much.